To do the right thing. Today, council will be asked to support to do the right thing to protect the health and safety of our citizens. We are asking for sacrifices and creating financial issues for many of our citizens and their families. This is a hard time to continue to ask you for your sacrifice. But this is our turn as a generation to do the right thing. When nine eleven happened, six thousand people enlisted to help defend our country. World War Two, many sacrificed their lives and lived with rationing and giving and giving in so many ways. With that, I want to clarify two phrases that I hear many citizens using. Governor Abbott also clarified these phrases during his public address yesterday. Stay in place means just that wherever you are, you must stay in place. This means if you are at a golf course, if you are at a rest stop, or if you are at the grocery store, you must stay exactly in place. No getting in the car, going back to your house, no turning around. So we need to better understand that this phrase is most often used when we have tornadoes or hurricanes. It is not something that we are going to be using today or going forward. This was made very clear by Governor Abbott. He also wanted to make sure that people understood what stay at home means. It means you cannot leave your home for any reason. No going to the grocery store, no getting gas, no walking, no jogging, no bicycling, no gardening, no painting the house. We are not going to use this terminology nor declare a stay at home or a stay in place. So to be clear, what we are discussing today for approval is a declaration of a local disaster that specifies or gives guidelines to what can be done, activities that can be done, and businesses that can continue to operate. A declaration that allows for the operation of doing essential business. You may leave your home to take care of essential businesses. Businesses may continue to operate by using CDC guidelines. Activities may be done outside the home, including walking, jogging, bicycling, golfing, fishing, and hunting. Teresa will go through the declaration so everyone better understands what we are asking for council approval. But be clear, this is not a stay in place or a stay at home order. It is a declaration that gives specific guidelines in terms of what can and what not to be doing, that you can do. We have changed some of the issues such as boat docks, golfing, parks being open that was issued yesterday before Governor Abbott's public address. Governor Abbott has declared activities such as fishing, hunting, walking, jogging, using our parks as essential activities and necessary for the health of our citizens. But he also clearly stated, we need to minimize contact with people who are not in your household. With that, I would like to move into item four on your agenda, which is the emergency agenda, which is considered declaring an extension to the declaration of a local disaster with amendments. And Teresa, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Teresa James. I'm the city attorney. And the first thing that this declaration does is it continues the declarations that you guys did. I guess it was on the nineteenth of March. And it also extends some of the requirements in accordance with the action that the governor took yesterday. The first thing that it does do is it tells residents that they need to remain in place of residence except those allowed by the declaration. As the mayor already said, there is a list of essential activities that does allow them to leave their residences. Those include for health and safety, so going to the doctor, for necessary supplies and services, for outdoor activity, provided of course, social distancing is followed, for certain types of work, so performing work, essential products and services listed as critical infrastructure, and we'll go through that in a minute, and then to take care of others. You can leave to take care of your mom or your aunt or somebody's pet. Those are all allowable reasons to leave your residence. This also, in accordance with the prior action we've taken and also the declaration or the executive order by the governor, does close some businesses. That includes gyms, massage services, nail salons, hair salons, tattoo services, piercing services, face or body waxing services, and any business in which person-to-person contact is required in the performance of the service, and that's not included in the critical infrastructure. So for instance, a doctor does use person-to-person contact, but they're part of critical infrastructure. Therefore, they are not closed under this provision. The following private or public recreational or amusement facilities must be closed, and that's things that are already generally closed in our community. Theaters, sexually oriented businesses, skating rinks, bowling alleys, swimming pools, dance studios, playgrounds, basketball courts, tennis courts, beaches, and camping areas. We're also in this section asking that people do not congregate at our parks, docks, or boat ramps. The major concern in the boat ramps and the docks was not people on boats, but people getting into boats or hanging out in the parking lot and, you know, hanging out with their friends. That activity is prohibited by this declaration. It does list the essential activities, as I stated, what those were. And it goes to the kinds of businesses that are considered critical infrastructure. And this is the list that is found at the U.S. Department of Homeland Security's Cyber and Infrastructure Security Agency. I know Brian Groves did create a nice little graphic that he'll be putting up if he hasn't already. And it shows generally what those businesses are, but it also provides the link to the TIDAM site, which is a Texas site, which lists all of these things from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, plus any additional things that the governor may in the future list as essential businesses. The general categories that we have are healthcare operations. This does not include fitness, exercise gyms, or other facilities. Any stores that sell groceries and other essentials, we are still keeping in place our hundred people in those stores or half the occupancy, so if it's a smaller store. They, and we're requiring you to maintain some distance between those stores. Food cultivation, which is livestock and cultivating food, is also, any kind of farming activities are allowable. Social services and charitable organizations are allowed. The news media, gas stations, auto dealerships, auto repair supply stores. Again, these come directly from what the Texas Department of Homeland Security has listed as essential services or critical services. Financial institutions, including banks, consumer lenders, sales and finance lenders, credit unions, appraisers, title companies, pawn shops, all of those are allowed. But as the governor's declaration said, these services should be provided remotely as much as possible. That is a very important provision that he included in his declaration yesterday, that to the extent possible, we do need to be working remotely. And any business that's not on these lists, they're welcome to operate, but they do need to be operating remotely with delivery or those sorts of services to the extent possible. Hardware building supply stores are still listed as an essential service. It's important to our health, safety, and welfare to maintain our structures. Critical trades, which are listed as plumbers, electricians, exterminators, pool cleaners, any of those things that if we don't have them come, we could have a pest issue or sanitation issue. Mail and package delivery services, laundry services, restaurants for carryout and delivery, which has already been in place. Businesses that supply items necessary to work for home. Because we are encouraging so many people to work remotely, it is important that we leave open those office supply stores and those other kinds of stores that provide the tools to allow us to do that. Any business that supplies computers or audiovisual electronics or components for those things, again, that assists everybody in working remotely. Food delivery, transportation, including Uber and Lyft. However, we do ask that those vehicles be sanitized after every customer to the extent possible, and drivers should not overdrive if they are feeling sick. Home-based care are still listed, residential facilities and shelters, professional services, including legal accounting, insurance, and real estate, IT services, hotels and motels, funeral services, although we are still asking that they limit to the extent possible the number of people that are coming together at those services. Then educational institutions, which we're not regulating, but the governor has closed for the next month. And then childcare facilities, we get a lot of questions about that. The state is regulating childcare facilities. It's very important that we allow those to stay open, and they are considered to be essential under the governor's order. But we have a lot of nurses and doctors and policemen environment, and we need childcare for their children so they can do their jobs. In addition, there's three, five other actions that we're asking that you take today in response to this emergency. The first is to disallow any extenuating or temporary health permits in the city of San Angelo. These are the folks who come from out of town and on a temporary basis, they set up in the parking lot of, you know, a big box store on somebody's personal property, and they operate. We've had a number of these folks who have come from other places where we know that there are positive cases, and they're trying to sell in our city, and we want to limit that. Any fee increases in the fee policy that you adopted that were to take place in this fiscal year? We're asking to be postponed and be reevaluated in accordance with the policy in preparation for the next fiscal year. So the budget cycle we're in right now, we're not going to look at those, but the next budget cycle we will. I'm asking that the city manager be authorized to enter into the agreements necessary to provide shelter or basic needs related to this declaration. We've had numerous conversations with members of the hospital who are looking for places for people to go when they have been told that they need to quarantine themselves, and they don't want to go home to their families or their children. So we are drafting some agreements and reaching out to hotels, and we'd like authorization for Daniel to execute those agreements as necessary. And then the last one, or two more, Hillside Drive and Gun Club Trail, otherwise known as the KOA Trail. We have had numerous reports and concerns about the number of people who are congregating on that trail. The action that we took to close or limit access to our parks does not apply to that because it's not a park, it actually is just a road. So we're asking that you close that road for right now to pedestrian traffic to help control the number of people who are congregating there. And then late fees assessed by the water utility from April first, 2020 through April thirtieth, 2020. We're asking that you waive those. I did include in this declaration a statement that if there's, in the event that there might be a conflict between what this is saying is an essential service and what the governor ordered, that the governor's controls. I mean, he made it explicitly clear that he wants control of those things, and I'm happy to give it to him. So if we do have a conflict with sides, between what I've gone over with you and what he has provided, then his will control. Are there any questions about that? I know I went through it pretty quickly.
I will add, go to each individual city council member and let them ask questions. The first one is going to be Tommy Hebert. He's put his hand up. And then so Tommy, if you would, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm Tommy Hebert, city council member, single member, district one. Teresa, did some things change? I had a call literally twenty minutes before this meeting started. Did anything change with respect to golf courses?
Well, what happened yesterday is Dr. Vretis and I, we were starting to get these positive cases in kids. And so Daniel and the mayor and Dr. Vretis and I had a conversation about how can we manage that short term? And so he issued an order that closed all recreational facilities. Part of that included golf courses. After watching what the governor did, and Dr. Vretis can speak to this if he needs to, after watching what the governor did and how he described what he wants to see as recreational opportunities, we looked again at the language that we had prescribed. And this morning, Dr. Vretis issued another order that essentially limits or explains how we're going to enforce what he did yesterday. And so part of that is the boats, the boat docks and ramps, which were a lot of concern for a lot of people. And we are going to allow those to remain open. Again, there's no congregating there. They can't hang out in the parking lot. It's to be used only to put your boat in and out. And anybody on the boat, in accordance with the governor's order and what we're passing today, needs to be part of a household. So you can't invite your fourteen friends over to get on your boat. Golf courses, it's the same way. We felt like that provided that golf courses are operating in such a manner that they don't allow people from different households to be on the same cart or within a certain distance of each other, then that would be allowable. So his order clarified that that was going to be an allowable recreational service.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do I have anyone else raising your hand to ask a question? Billy, go ahead.
Yes, Teresa, I understood very clearly what you said the governor's order was, that there would be no person-to-person contact in certain situations. But I've gotten several calls from independent salon owners that are questioning why they couldn't commit to scheduling one appointment at a time, excuse me, so that it would just be the operator and a client, and they could wear face masks. And, you know, some of these folks are single parents, and this is their only livelihood. And at this point, I don't think anybody is one hundred percent certain when that stimulus package will come through so that they have some financial relief. And I just, I know in the governor's order, he said he would leave some things up to the local communities because they knew best how to handle that. So his order was that there be no person-to-person and that salons were included in that. So would we have any flexibility at all in that, Teresa?
We do not. I mean, we can be more restrictive than he is on those things, but we cannot be less restrictive. And he specifically states, you know, cosmetology salons, those kind of activities are part of what people need to be avoiding. And I don't know if Sandra or the doc can talk a little bit to why that's important and how that kind of contact is not, you know, safe for our community right now, but it was in the governor's order.
Doc Vretis, you want to talk and add comment to what Teresa just said? You need, yeah.
Yes, ma'am. The main reason for wanting to keep this in effect is that even though you're only taking care of one client at a time, throughout the day, you might have five, six, seven people in there. And so if the first patient, first client comes in and you get infected from that patient, you're spreading it to the next five or six. There's no real way of stopping spread. And even though people may wear a mask, people, you know, the general public's not trained on how to put on masks, how to do proper PPE. So I just think it's a short-term gain with a long-term loss.
I think the big issue is, and I've heard many comments too, Billy, from people who are barbers, hairdressers, cosmetologists, services, because they are the breadwinner. And it's one of those areas that is truly creating some financial burden on the families. And we realize that it's been probably the number one thing I get asked about, so.
We are also encouraging people to go ahead and buy gift certificates to those salons if they can or buy products from those folks so that they can keep up some sort of line of income. But as the mayor said, we understood that that was going to be a very unique situation in a group of people who are going to be disproportionately affected by these orders. But again, it's what the governor has stated, and as the doc stated, it is necessary.
Lane, you raised your hand.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right, Lane Carter, SMD five. I think my question is mainly focused both to Teresa and Dr. Vretis. How are we doing in efforts of tracing the contact with the first nine? Do we, I know the CDC likes to track that. How are we doing as a local community of finding out where they've been, where they worked, warning those places in the bounds of the HIPAA law? And then also keeping, this one will be for Teresa, keeping the positives that have not been hospitalized in place. Because I know we've all heard the rumors out there, seen it on Facebook, on comments, that a few of them have been out and about in the community. What's the effort so bad?
Great comment, Lane. And Dr. Vretis, you want to talk about that first, and then we'll let Teresa add comment.
Sure. Every time anybody comes back with a positive test, we're ordering a order of isolation on that person, and they're being served with that. We say specifically, they must stay at home. Again, we heard that people were going out and about, so we've ordered that they cannot do that anymore. Same thing if there are family members of somebody under isolation, we're putting them under orders of quarantine. We're not relying on their, the good faith of them because so many of them haven't had it.
Yeah, and the other thing that we added, I'm sorry. The thing we added yesterday is we have a blanket order on anybody who's taking a test that is going to be monitored by one of the, either the health department or one of the hospitals. They're getting a quarantine order at the time they take the test so that we don't have to wait for them to be all over town, and then we issue the order. We can start acting on that a little more vigilantly from the beginning. I think Sandra actually can answer the question about the tracking.
Well, one of the reasons you ask in this declaration for the city manager to be able to do, and that is to develop a contract with a hotel so that people who do have family members have the ability to isolate other than at home. And that's pretty key because we know three of the first six was one family. So thirty percent of the first were all family members, so we know it becomes an issue. So we have to have the ability to put people in an isolation that's not in the hospital but is in a room away from a family. So that is part of what we're asking to have happen today. Sandra, do you want to add any further comment to answer Lane's question?
Yes, good afternoon, Sandra Villarreal, Director of Health for the city. And as far as contact tracing, yes, the nurses and our PHTP person will question the individual and ask them where they may have been, where they may have traveled to. If we can identify a pinpoint location, because oftentimes we cannot. Specifically, we had one yesterday, one of our positives. We knew exactly where he had been, so we contacted that facility and let them know that someone, obviously without identifying someone, had tested positive for COVID and to please encourage their attendees at this local place to monitor themselves. I mean, that was a small, small location, and we were able to do that. However, it's very difficult if they say, I've been all over the stores because we honestly cannot tell. But we do try to contact as many of their contacts that they have identified because we will ask them those questions. A lot of these are travelers. For instance, one person came from Georgia, so we obviously knew we can't go back to Georgia. But we knew this probably was the way that this was transmitted to locally here. But again, yeah, we do have a questionnaire, we do have a series of those. But there's only so far back that we can really go. And at that point, it's very difficult to really identify. And that's where we're getting this community spread. If we cannot identify this is a true travel-related case, that this person came from here from a high, from a high, at a location where they've got high numbers, then we really, there's really not a clear way to identify where this person may have contacted or even to let anybody know. Because unfortunately, I mean, not unfortunately, but we're thinking everyone, excuse me. If we say we've been, they've been at Walmart, well, yeah, they've been at Walmart, but also everyone at Walmart really should still be following all of these things, all of these, you know, mitigation processes that we're asking people to do. So we could identify and say Walmart, but is it really going to change the outcome? And everybody else is supposed to be doing these things. But we are contact tracing, and we do talk to people if they identify a particular person or a location that, you know, we will, you know, we will make those attempts at least to contact their contacts and let them.
Okay, thank you. Lane, you have a question?
Yes, Lane Carter, SMD five again. We're limiting how many people can go into buildings to a hundred. Is that, I know other towns have done it off of a square footage basis. Have we looked at that, or are we kind of, are we stuck at that hundred?
We have looked at it, Lane. Let Teresa answer that. We have looked at it as part of the declaration.
Yeah, we have looked at it, and we're, we're doing the hundred people. But we're being very flexible on enforcement of that. What we really want them to do is control access to their facilities and, and control people in line. So we don't have an officer, we don't have time for officers. And no do we expect our police officers to go into a facility and count how many people are in there. What we do expect of these places is that they're controlling the people, that they're making sure that they're keeping a safe environment for all of us, that they're making, they're trying to ensure that people, you know, are staying six feet apart while they're in line.
Gotcha.
And that, the great news is everyone, as of Monday, was following that guidance. And the key thing was one central location to enter instead of having multiple entrances into a facility, so they better could control it. So we have everyone participating at this point in time, so that's a good thing.
Gotcha. Yeah, my main concern was going in from, you know, you have a hundred and twenty-five thousand square foot facility, like at Lowe's and Home Depot, hundred people in there in relation to a smaller facility like, like McCoy's City Lumber. That's, that's the trade I'm in, so those are the buildings I go into the most of. And my next, my last, it's not a question, but just a comment. A lot of people have called me because they think that we're being a little too extreme, but here's, here's a little into perspective how we are. We're Tom Green County of a hundred and eighteen thousand people. We had a, a caseload of nine. So when you, when you multiply that out on percentage of population, it is the same percentage of affected as Bear County of a hundred and fifty-seven cases as of yesterday with one point eight nine million people. So that can almost, we can both go either way. We can supersede them or they can supersede us, but the affected population, Tom Green County is relating to a, a almost two million count county as of now. And, you know, anything that we can do to help limit this to where our citizens and our elderly and our infants can not contract this disease is the best that we can do.
Yeah, the number one thing is our population isn't going to vary, but the percentage can go up dramatically. And what we're trying to do is to, you know, when you have a smaller population, having three more people in one day has dramatic impact in terms of the percentage. So we have to keep that in mind. It might not seem like a large number, but it's a percentage is, and that's a very good point.
I think it's point zero zero eight percent of the, of the population is what we were, so.
Lucy, you hold your hand up.
Help you beauty.
Do you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Teresa, I was going to ask you a question about the parks. Due to the fact that Easter's coming up, that's the main place that people go to. Can you explain to us again what they need to do if they choose to go to these parks?
Playgrounds are closed. Any of the facilities at the parks are closed. They can't use those. And I think the key word in that is congregate. We, I mean, the, everything that the governor said is you need to stay with the people that you live with. You don't need to be interacting across households. And so you can't go there and have a picnic with your family. You can use the park to walk, you can use the park to bike, you can use the park for a lot of things, fish. You can fish from the shore. But we don't want you congregating in the same way that you did. We contemplated just completely shutting the parks for Easter. We don't want to do that. But we do have the ability to do that under our code of ordinances if people do start congregating at Easter time in ways that's going to be detrimental to the health of our community.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, can I, can I clarify one thing from earlier? Yeah, I want to go back to this notification issue on the patients. Dr. Vretis and I are doing orders, isolation and quarantine orders for all those households where there's a positive test. But the other thing that we are doing is when we have one of those, we notify our dispatchers so that they can provide information to our police and firefighters that they know there's a positive test in there. We've also told them that, you know, you should assume that when you're going into somebody's house, that there could be a positive there. But we are trying to keep them a little bit safer by letting them know precisely where those people are located.
Okay, thank you. I've got two hands up, one Tommy Hebert, and then after that, Tom Thompson, you'll be on. So Tommy Hebert, you're on.
Tommy Hebert, single member, district one. A couple of questions. Teresa, what about folks that might be in transition and moving literally from one location in town to another that have hired moving, professional moving folks to help them move from one location to another? Can they do that?
Yes, moving services are listed under the essential services on the list provided by the governor.
Okay, and a little, this, this is a little further clarification. Did I just hear you say that bicycle riding within the park on the, you know, Spring Creek Park specifically, I've gotten a question about can they go out and ride their bicycle at Spring Creek Park? Sounds like you said yes.
Yes, we're not going to limit that. We're going to allow bicycles on the roads. There are some trails you're not supposed to ride a bike on anyway. You still can't ride your bike there, but on roads they can.
Okay, thank you.
I think the biggest question, Tommy, that I kept hearing is Gun Club Road.
Yeah, yeah.
People using that. Are, are good to go.
Good, thank you, thank you.
All right, Tom Thompson.
Yeah, I've got a question here for Dr. Vretis. As far as getting the results from this, and let's say timely results are paramount in how we deal with this going forward. Can you explain to people the process from when they give a sample and take a test to when we get results?
Sure. Okay, yeah, when somebody goes to the drive-in and gets their nasal pharyngeal swab, basically with the Q-tip in the nose, it gets put in a viral medium, it gets sent off to a lab. The labs that right now, we're getting test results back, seven, eight. We got one back that's eleven days delay for that. The FDA has just approved a couple new tests. I know we're put in for both of those machines. We're waiting for them. It'll probably be before mid. It'll probably be before mid-April, before we actually have the machines and have the material and can start using them. Those will give us five-minute to ten-minute turnarounds. Significantly improvement, but for time being, we can't speed up everything that gets sent out of town.
Okay, so, so the key part to that is what we're seeing today is probably eight to ten, maybe twelve days behind what we were.
Correct.
Okay.
The good news for the numbers right now is we have more negative tests than we have tests at this point that we still need information on. Before, we had more tests than we had negative results. And so the numbers are kind of flipping. So the good news is we've got a lot more negatives than we have pending tests.
Yeah, I'm good. Thanks, Doc.
What other questions does someone have or comments that anyone would like to make? Billy, you're on. I see him. Billy?
It had been said earlier and I missed it, but are we going to extend, have, do we have a date in mind where we're going to recommend extending our orders and the new declarations we're talking about today?
Well, that is part of what we're doing today because as of this Friday, our old declaration, we would have had to meet, we're moving this up forward. The Governor Abbott has extended the state to April thirtieth, and that is.
Yes.
The question mark is, are we allowed to do two weeks at a time and then meet again and extend it? Or whether we want to today extend ours in, in coordination with Governor Abbott's April thirtieth deadline? Teresa, you want to answer that?
Yeah, my recommendation is we stay in line with his recommendation, what his deadline is. I mean, he essentially did the same thing that we're doing. So there's not a lot of benefit for us if we go to a two-week, other than we get to, all get to come together on this, you know, fine contraption again in two weeks. The other thing is that if the situation drastically changes in two weeks, it's a very easy process to rescind all of these orders. You don't have to have a big meeting to do it. It's not in effect until it dies. We do have the ability to rescind it. So staying in line with the governor's timeline is what I'm recommending.
I think the key thing is we have the ability to move that deadline backwards. Let's say, this is just an example, not what I'm requesting or asking, is we could say April fifteenth, we've not had but one more positive test, so we could say we're on the other side of it. And we would have the opportunity to change that date from April thirtieth. Is that correct, Teresa?
That's correct on our declaration. Of course, the governors will still be in place. So it's not going to change on the surface a whole lot of what happens.
Okay. Harry, you had a question or comment?
Yes, I have a question on, since it's taking seven to ten days to get these results back, are we getting, giving any instructions to these patients that are getting these tests done at the time that they are taking them, so that if one comes back positive, we are able to track that whole, that whole situation?
Dr. Vretis, would you please answer that question?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, we, we are actually giving instructions to everybody when they get tested. We inform them that after the time they get tested, they are under quarantine and they're in quarantine for fourteen days or until released. And they're giving those instructions right off the bat. So I think we're doing better now than we were before. At first, we just, we told them you're quarantined, but I don't think they were handed anything. So now they've got something in writing, and then we've also issued an order saying that if you get tested, you're under quarantine. So it's not a voluntary quarantine anymore.
All right, Teresa, you wanted to comment on that as well?
Doc did a fine job.
Okay. Harry, did you have a further comment? And then I'll get with you, Billy.
Please, I, I just wanted to follow up there. I, I think that's what the concern from citizens are right now is, is, you know, we're getting a number of people that are getting tested, but they don't have the results back for seven to ten days, and they're afraid that these people are going out and, and basically interacting with, with other individuals. Of course, by the middle of the month, when we get these two machines in and we get these results back in ten or fifteen minutes, I think all citizens will be more at ease about this process.
All right, Billy?
Yes, my question is, are we testing anyone that wants to get a test? Are we only testing people after we have screened them and they're showing some symptoms of having COVID-19?
Teresa or doctor which would like to answer that? Doc, would you?
Yes, they're only being tested after they've been screened. So they have to have cough, fever, have to have some symptoms along with it. You can't just come up and say, I want a test. We don't have the resources to do that. We're, we're way far behind on people that have symptoms. I don't see why we put in asymptomatic people because it's not going to change anything.
All right. And ma'am, may I ask another question? It's along the lines of, you know, the payment for these, are people being charged for the test and their insurance applied for, or how is that working?
Shane Plimell basically has said that if you come through, they're taking the information down. They're not using your credit card at that point because they don't want to use the fingers and the transmission from a credit card, et cetera. So all that information is being written down if you have insurance. Now, there was a statement, of course, that it was costing eighty dollars, whatever, and President Trump had said, well, they're supposed to be free. At the point in time when he declared they were supposed to be free, the stimulus bill had not been signed yet. So up until the signature of that bill, people were paying for the tests. Now, with that bill being paid, people, if they don't have insurance, can apply to have that bill covered by the stimulus bill, as I believe is correct. Dr. Vretis, would you further comment on that?
I, I think you're correct on that. You know, everything up to now has been run by private labs and private labs, like any other private business, like to get paid for what they do. Insurance is great. I know, you know, Shannon and community, nobody is refusing to test anybody based on financial ability. You know, it's, if you meet the criteria, you get tested.
Thank you.
All right, Billy, I'm, Lang, you had your hand raised, please?
Another question that I've been asked a few times is the status of churches. Depending, I know a lot of them have gone to the web-based, for those that are not web-based, what is the limit that they can have? Are we still sticking to the ten-person rule or are we going more strict?
It has been a frequently asked question, I think, of everybody, and there's a certain amount of issue, of course, with the Freedom of Religion Act, and so we're trying to work around what that dictates or says and still trying to protect the safety and health of our citizens. So Teresa will add further comment to that.
Yeah, what the governor's order actually said, and churches are listed as an essential business on his order. So cities are not able to regulate them beyond what this says. But it says if religious services cannot be conducted from home or through remote service, then they should be conducted consistent with guidelines from the President and the CDC by practicing good hygiene, environmental cleanliness, sanitation, implementing social distancing. So in order for churches to get the answer as to what's required, they need to go to the CDC website. And they do have a specific section that's just for religious institutions, and that'll tell them all of those kinds of things. I've had lots of conversations with pastors of churches, and churches are doing some like incredible, like creative things out there to stay connected with the people in their church as well as other folks. And I think with a little bit of creativity, that's possible. One thing that I know my church did last week, and the governor talked about in his press conference, is, you know, doing drive-in church, where church was broadcast over the radio. We all sat in our cars and waved at people through the windshield. That was an acceptable way that, you know, Dr. Vretis believed we could have church as well as the governor. So lots of creative solutions out there besides meeting. I don't know if Sandra wants to talk about this at all and the risk, but I would let her do that.
It's too bad we got a system of the drive-in movie where you'd roll down your wind and put the speaker in your, your window, you know, and roll it back up because we could get a lot more done that way. But we're in a different time and era right now. So any further question, Lang? Lucy, you had a question?
I was just going to ask the doctor, you know, out of the nine positive cases that we've had, how many of those nine cases have been hospitalized? And are y'all using a different part of the hospital for those people?
Okay. Three of those nine have been hospitalized. We have several other patients at both hospitals that we believe have COVID, but we don't have positive tests back on them. I think probably seventeen, from what I heard this morning, total hospitalized people who we think have COVID that we don't have test results back on. They've got all the symptoms for them. Yes, we do actually have, I'm speaking for Shannon there because I don't really know what community has. We do have a separate COVID wing where we put all this COVID suspected patients there. Then we have another respiratory ring for people that have just asthma that don't have the COVID. We've tried to cohort the patients, we're co-harding the docs, so only a special COVID team goes in and takes care of those people. So we're just trying to limit the number of docs that go in there.
Okay, thank you.
What other questions do we have for our experts on the phone or for city manager? Any further questions about what we're being asked to decide today? Tommy?
Dr. Vretis, can you talk to us a little bit? I know we, we hear some, and we'll likely begin to hear more as, as time moves on. Can you talk to us a little bit about, let, let, I don't know what the correct term is, but I'd call it the surge, the, the recurrence. Once we, it appears we're beginning to get through this. Can you talk a little bit about what we need to, to be concerned about or pay attention to once it looks like it may start to, to get a little better?
Okay, well, first I'll go over the surge numbers for them. The numbers were kind of, I'm going to use Shannon's kind of area because that's, if we look at the whole Concho Valley area that we serve, it's about two hundred and sixteen thousand people. Out of those, eighty percent are considered adults. If we look at a conservative estimate, we're saying twenty percent of those, one hundred and seventy-three thousand adults, twenty percent of them come down with COVID, that's thirty-four thousand who get COVID in our area, in twenty-four counties around here. Twenty percent of them need to be hospitalized, which would be six thousand nine hundred being hospitalized, five percent of those are critical. So that'd be three hundred and forty-six that end up being admitted to intensive care units. And that's with a real mild twenty percent incidence of infection. When you go to moderate, forty percent, then we end up having six hundred and ninety-two critical patients. If it's a severe infection at a sixty percent penetration, which are seen in several places, then we're talking about a thousand thirty-eight critically ill patients, a total number of almost a quarter of a million hospital days. If we spread this out, because we talked about trying to flatten the curve, if we spread it out and this all happened over a six-month period, then our average daily census for a twenty percent infection is four hundred and sixty-one. We could handle that. If it's a forty percent infection rate, it's, they, yeah, it's nine hundred and twenty-three, but if it's that severe infection, we need thirteen hundred and eighty-four beds to handle those people out of the five hundred that we have. So we're going to be at eight hundred beds we won't have. If we read that out over eighteen months, then the twenty percent number comes out to be a hundred and fifty-four average daily census, and the sixty percent number is four hundred and sixty-one, a number that we could barely handle, but we could handle. If this surge all comes at once, if we don't do the social distancing, there's just going to be a lot of people.
What other questions? Tommy, did you have a further question?
Well, I was just going to follow up. Lane had referenced it early, Dr., earlier. Dr. Vretis just then gave us the, the, the statistical information. Some people may think what we're doing here today is uncalled for, but what we are trying to do is, is not overwhelm our medical system and to prevent as much spread as we can. Dr. Redfield, the, the, the head of the CDC, came out and, and, and said something to the same effect within the last twenty-four to forty-eight hours. And I, and I quote what he said. He said, one of the pieces of information that we pretty much confirmed is that a significant number of individuals that are infected actually remain asymptomatic. That may be as many as twenty-five percent. That's important because now you have individuals that may not have any symptoms that can contribute to transmission. And we have learned that in fact, they do contribute to transmission. So if everybody would just stay at home and not be around people, we can live, we can get through this. It may be, maybe longer than we like, but we, we, we need to pay attention to these professionals. Dr. Vretis, the CDC folks, Dr. Burks, Dr. Fauci, they are saying, let's stay apart. So we need to, we need to heed what those people are telling us.
If we don't, this thing will last much longer. So the key thing is the more aggressive we are today, the shorter the timeframe will be in terms of the impact on this community. And we say it over and over again, but this is about social responsibility and using common sense. It is not about pointing a finger and blaming anybody at this point in time. It's about doing the right thing. It's about taking personal responsibility and understanding the impact on this community. There are people who are greatly being hurt financially, and we've got to make sure that we don't carry this burden too far down the road. It's, it's a crisis right now. The faster, the quicker, the more we pay attention to it, the better we'll be. And that's one of the reasons for our meeting today, is to get more aggressive, to be more specific, to follow Governor Abbott's direction, and he's following President Trump's direction. So we are only doing what we've been asked to do, but it won't matter if people aren't paying attention and not honoring what these guidelines are. So it's individual responsibility. Lucy, you had raised your hand, I believe.
Yes, ma'am. I was just going to ask you because someone just texted me and they wanted to know, Teresa, what about the sales side dealerships, not the, you know, our big dealerships, ships? But what about if you have, you know, a small business? Can they still operate?
Well, I think it depends what they are selling. I mean, the governor set out specifically what he considers that critical need or those essential services. Anybody else outside of that can still stay open, but they can't allow customers in their store. They can have delivery options. They can do online options. They can like try to be creative in how to do that. I saw this morning, somebody posted that the Chamber of Commerce has a website or a site available now to show people how to purchase those services online now. But only the ones that are listed as essential services are the ones that are allowed to remain open and have customers in and out unless they are able to like practice remotely, remotely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, with that, let's proceed with this declaration of disaster due to the public health emergency. I would need a vote, I mean, I would need a motion to approve what has been presented today. And then the second, so do I have a motion for approval?
Don't move, mayor. Tommy Hebert, single member District One.
Thank you, Tommy. Do I have a second?
I'll second. Lane Carter, District Five.
Lane Carter. Yes, before we take a vote, we do have some public comment that was sent to us by email. Do I have those? Do we have any questions from any of you regarding questions to staff? But we've already done that.
Pertaining to the public comment that they received in their.
If you have any comments or questions about the public comments received in your packets, and it says, what about families that live in hotels and job temporary clothes due to Corona? A member of family has heart problems, may die if it gets virus, two days late as of today, has been current manager, not concerned? Teresa, you want to ask, answer that?
So what was, I'm not clear on what the question is. What kind of help is available for them? Is that the question?
Yeah, a family who lives in a hotel.
Yeah, hotels are considered residences under our, our particular declaration, under any of them. Any place that you are residing is considered your residence for the purposes of this. So they are allowed to stay in the hotel. I mean, if people are having some housing issues, we do still have Neighborhood Services that's trying to assist some of those folks as possible.
All right, so one question was concerning from Family Power Sports concerning the boat docks. We've addressed that issue today already. We've talked about, from someone asked what stay-at-home means. We've discussed what that is and what it is not. We have asked, there is the question about golf courses. We've addressed that today as well and given direction concerning that. Another question concerning boat ramps, we've addressed that as well today. Let's see, this one says, although my employee is not considered essential business and neither is my husband's place of work, they are not going to close until we have a local sheltering place ordered. in place order.
Well, this is that. I mean, to the, as much to the extent as it's going to happen, I think that that's where we are today.
But we do not have a shelter in place. And we need to remind everybody, what you think is shelter in place is not what we're doing and it's not by the legal definition what we are doing. Another question is.
But we are asking people to stay at home and not congregate.
That is correct.
We are asking them to please stay away from other people to reduce the transmission and spread of this.
Yes, but if office buildings have the ability to have you in your own separate office with six feet distancing, social distancing, they can continue to operate. So one does not, we are not closing any business per se as long as they live with the CDC guidelines. And social distancing is a key part of that. Let's see, there's a question about buying that says, I'd love nothing, I'd love nothing more than for this city council to lift the public health emergency. Until testing becomes more readily available and reliable, this is an overreaction that will have lasting consequences. Half the world still needs to keep spinning, the other half can decide to stop if they want, but it should be a choice. I am a taxpayer, doesn't seem like a super important job, but I still have clients buying houses now. I have clients who need their taxes done to get the stimulus payments. I have clients who are still getting letters from the RRS. None of these things can just stop because of a virus, a virus that is shown to be a little consequence to the vast majority of people who come into contact with it. I'm frustrated with my rights being infringed upon without proof of just cause. There's nothing behind your decision except fear. I'm not afraid and those who are can go hide while the rest of us live our lives. Please lift this ban and let us get back to living. So Dr. Vretis and Teresa, would you address that comment?
I'll address it first at least. When you look at the 64,000 cases they have in New York State, remember that's as of this morning, 64,000, I believe it was, March 1st, we got their very first case. So even though we've got very few numbers here, we're right at the very start of that upswing. So, you know, things could get bad here in a hurry. And from when you start doing movement restriction, shelter in place, whatever, there's a 10 to 14-day lag before you start hitting the top of any curve of any new cases that you're going to have. You know, to blow this off is putting many lives at risk. And, you know, I understand businesses need to operate, and it breaks my heart seeing these places closed, but it breaks my heart more when I have to tell somebody that their loved one died because we put money over lives.
Well, let me just say, and then I'll let Teresa talk a minute, but as a tax preparer, you may continue to do your work. No one is shutting down a CPA office. You may continue to do your work. People can still buy houses. It is not shutting down the housing, the real estate market, has nothing to do with that. And in order to get the stimulus payments, yes, you have to work with a CPA, you're going to have to work with your banker. Those people are going to help you prepare the documents that are going to be required to get these stimulus payments. So those services are not shut down. They just need to continue to follow the CDC guidelines. That's what's important. Teresa?
Yes, ma'am. The governor, even if we didn't do this today, the governor's order is still going to regulate how we do it. Our declaration today just clarifies what he did. And what he is saying, in particular, all services should be provided through remote telework from home unless they're essential service and cannot be provided through remote telework. So essential services, if you don't, you can't telework, you're allowed to remain open. Everybody else, to the extent they can, needs to be working from home. They need to be going online. They need to be having like delivery services and not having people come in and out of their stores. And I think that there is more and more help for people out there. But again, what you guys are doing is clarifying for our community, your expectations under the governor's declaration. We have no ability to remove the declaration that he's already put in place.
We can't, and remember, we are also under Governor Abbott's direction. So he's been very clear about what he expects each of us to do. We can be more restrictive, but we cannot be less restrictive. But construction can continue. There have been many people who question construction. Construction may continue, but they must follow the CDC guidelines. CPAs can continue to work. Banks can continue to be open to process the need for money for stimulus reports, etc., and to make sure that they have the right documents to qualify for these payments. So we're not holding up anyone from being able to do those following things. Okay, so Tommy, you had a question or comment?
Further clarification, I would ask, golf courses are okay? We had specifically also mentioned in the Dr. Vretis order a couple of days ago about tennis, is tennis okay under this order or no?
Tennis is still.
Clarify that. And here's, go ahead, Teresa.
Tennis is closed, tennis courts are closed, both under Dr. Vretis's order and under this order.
Okay, thank you.
But if two people wanted to play tennis and they were the same family, you played a game with, you were playing with your wife or your son, and it's just the two of you on the tennis court, can that be allowed?
You know, can it be allowed is really kind of an enforcement issue. What we're really trying to manage here, and Doc can probably speak to this better than I can, is people congregating together who are not already together. So if we get a call that it's a husband and a wife playing tennis, we don't have the police force and we don't have a desire for our police to go out and manage that. If we have a number of people doing that, or there's a lot of people, those are the kinds of things that get our attention. Now, are we asking people not to play tennis with people who are unrelated? Yes, absolutely, we are. Our standard is you do not do those activities with somebody who is not part of your household in order to contain the spread of this virus.
That's the key thing, staying within the household, family, playing tennis or pickleball. It's when we start playing with people who are outside the household that becomes problematic. Lane?
Yes, the status of the existing nine. Can we provide an update to the citizens within the bounds of how their recovery rate is going? That way, we know exactly how we are progressing. Are we looking like it's more infectious or is it getting to where they are towards where we not have nine cases, but we have eight with one recovery, seven with two recovery in the bounds of that? Is that a possibility?
Lane, are you asking on the cases that are currently positive?
Currently.
There, are they now considered non-positive or negative?
Correct. I know we have to have two positive or two negative cases after the following, following a positive to make sure that they are truly recovered. And Dr. Vretis, does it still take 48 hours within the two tests to prove that they are truly recovered? Or have they come out with a test that is quicker than that's proven?
I don't think that there is a test that can guarantee that you're negative. You know, the positive test has got predictive value. It means that indeed, you're positive. But, you know, we've seen so many false negatives, you know, around the world, around the country, around Texas, that that's the reason that we don't take a single negative is they're not infected.
Right. I know they had a lot of problems in Wuhan, China, where I read an article, they were saying that the initial test that they were using, that people were showing up positive, but then they were considered recovered, but then they tested positive again, wondering if that initial test was accurate or not. Were they actually positive at that time?
Yeah, and it's kind of hard to say that, you know, because, you know, yeah, we are seeing people that will test negative, negative, then they turn positive with no new exposure. And then we've also seen people that initially were positive, they turned negative, and then after a while, they turn positive again. So they're seeing like there's relapses in China now. And when they actually, instead of doing nasal swabs, they do fecal swabs, you're finding out that a lot of these people we thought were recovered are actually still shedding virus for a longer period than we thought.
Okay, so Lucy, you had another question?
We were just talking about families just a little bit ago. And I was just wanting to make a statement and ask people that if, at all possible, if you do not have to take your children with you to the grocery store or other places that you're doing your essential, please do not take them, leave them at home with the other parent.
This has been a big issue because we are limiting the number of people into these stores. And so if mom, dad, and the three kids show up, we're eliminating other people from being allowed in. So there's no reason to bring the whole family. If you've got one of the parents who can stay home with the kids, a single member from the family should be doing these errands, not the entire family. So that is a great courtesy to give to all the rest of the people who need to get their groceries or supplies. Okay, and the last comment that we have is from a construction company. And certainly, we realize the importance of the construction industry right now, so just continue to follow the CDC guidelines. Those are the completes, the number of email requests for comments that we have received. So again, I had a motion and a second for this declaration. Daniel, would you like to add a comment?
Just very briefly, I know that we covered a lot of territory. Teresa, as an attorney, has done a wonderful job as far as deciphering and looking at the executive orders by the governor. So there's a lot of information out there, but I can tell you right now that Brian Groves, our Public Information Officer, has done a wonderful job of putting together a graphic that really explains what you can and can't do. And if you go to our website, acosta-tx.us, and hit the, we have a tab there for the coronavirus, hit that, and you'll find that graphic there. And it really will simplify the do's and don'ts. So we definitely encourage you to do that. I know you definitely can call up here and ask questions, but I think if you go there, a lot of your questions really will be answered.
Thank you. We'll take a vote. I'm going to go, and I'm going to ask each and every one of you so we publicly have that vote instead of raising the hands on this issue. So with that, I'm going to go to SMD one, Tommy. Your vote? SMD two, your vote? Tom, Tom Thompson, do we unmute these so we can hear? Hold on one second, we're trying to unmute everybody.
Okay.
Okay.
Tom Thompson, single member, District Two, I vote aye.
SMD three, Harry?
Harry Thomas, SMD three, I vote aye.
SMD four, Lucy?
SMD four, Lucy Gonzalez, I vote aye.
SMD five?
Lane Carter, SMD five, I vote aye.
SMD six, Billy DeWitt.
Billy DeWitt, SMD six, I vote aye.
Brenda Gunter, the mayor, votes aye. With that, we have passed with a seven to zero vote, the new continuing declaration of disaster due to public health emergency for the city of San Antonio, Texas. I want to thank you for your time. I want to thank each of you for what you're doing to help get the message out there and filling all the emails and the telephone calls and the text messages. It's a full-time job right now, just making sure all the citizens understand the direction and the need for their compliance and to answer the questions on a timely basis so they don't feel like they're lacking the information to move on with their lives. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
A motion to.
Move adjourn, Mayor.
Thank you, Bill. You in a second. And I suppose we can all say aye together?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes for adjournment, seven to zero. Thank you very much.